Good evening, welcome to the planning board meeting of July nineteenth. Can you stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation and one God, in the principle of the free and justice of all.
Okay, we'll call the members present, Tom Young Chair.
Matt Schumaker Vice Chair.
Mike Proto Clerk.
Steve Perry Selecting Rep.
Okay, Samuel Member.
Kimberly Queenen Member.
Excuse this evening is Russ Blanchett. Also just a note that Paul Charland has resigned from the board. Got a letter from him. Do we have any public input before we start? Okay. Recreation Committee ready?
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Andy Collins from the Recreation Commission.
Kurt Shaefer, Litchfield Baseball.
Is there any access, can we make sure people in the audience?
Yeah. I know you guys had a chance to discuss briefly at the end of your last meeting some of what we were looking to do. And I know this plan, as you can see, the two plans look a little different. This one that's on the picture was the original plan that we were going with. I left this just so you could sort of see what it would look like as far as the aerial shot. This is the layout that we're looking to go with just to create a little bit more usable space in the fields. Originally, we were going to try and do something behind the two backstops as a, like a snack shack type thing. And once we decided that really wasn't the best plan, it was better to have the two fields facing each other. It was brought up at the, by one of the members of the Rec Commission as far as insurance wise too. So that the fields aren't back to back, the foul balls and stuff going into each other's fields. The only time a ball would go into a field is if somebody really, really got a hold of one and hit it thirty-five feet over the fence, which will happen probably from time to time, but not enough to really cause an issue. It also gave us the opportunity to shorten. Basically, what we're going to do is a little driveway there to have a snack shack have that closer to the road so the power can be closer to the road, which should make things a lot easier. As far as the police are concerned, a lot less in the back of the field that people can be messing with. So it's a lot more visible from the street.
You're proposing a grass parking area?
Well, that's, the latest thought is, because we met with the neighbors, they did agree that parking is going to be an issue. We wanted to keep a parking area there, but we didn't want to really make it a parking lot because we felt that maybe a grass parking area would be better, so it wouldn't, for the neighbors. They were, especially the neighbor that butts the parking area. We thought that a grass area, so that when there's nobody parking there, it's still a grass field that can be utilized in other ways. It's not a gravel spot where people are just going to throw trash. So basically, there'll be, where you can see the dark line, that'll be like a railing, a wooden guardrail with two ramps going up and a grass swale running along the road.
Do you think it will actually stay grass or do you think it'll just be a dirt lot by the time people are driving on it?
Um, I mean, it'll probably weeds. It probably won't be like perfect, it won't be a perfect lawn, but it should be green.
You're going to put some sort of gravel or something there, right?
No, he's talking about leaving it grass.
You gotta do something. You can't just try to cause a grass effect instead. You know what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
If it rains.
The grass will become dirt. So then dirt will rot. You gotta do some sort of substance to at least slow it down. You don't even have to lot. You know that like driveway stuff, that base, the mid pack stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Probably get rid of that. Probably only need a couple of years.
Okay, just to sort of, to work in with the dirt?
It doesn't dust too easily, so.
Okay.
It's definitely something that you need, you probably don't have to do it right away, but it has to be in the plan because in two years you'd regret it.
Or the second that it rained and someone parked there.
Yeah.
So you gotta try and put something in.
That butter is not present tonight, I assume.
Yes, actually.
So, so, you know, hearing that, you know, I understand definitely not wanting to live next door to a parking lot. But, you know, given, given what it could potentially look like as, if left as grass, do you, I mean, do you understand the, do you see why gravel might be a better option in terms of, like, I think you might be looking at something a lot worse if you're looking at grass.
Now I'm looking at sand.
I was gonna say right now, I don't know.
I'm looking at sand, it's been, I've been there for about forty years.
I don't know if it's getting worse or not.
The only thing, the only concern I have was the fact that if he's going to put a parking lot, I don't, this is in Dara Pond, so a parking lot in the middle of residential area, I disagree with. Originally, they said they wanted to lower it. You also have to realize that you're on Reed's Pond. You have, you're gonna have a serious, serious, serious water problem. There's about a two-foot ditch on one side. Like they're trying to get rid of the water now, there is no drainage. The closest drainage is to the far end of my property. The next one is all.
Are you on the right or the left, sorry?
Actually, it's down by Mike.
If you're standing in the parking lot looking at the fields, he's on the right.
I'm the, I'm sorry, I'm the right.
Okay, I got you.
No, I'm on the left. If you're standing in the parking lot or in the field?
In the parking lot, looking at the field, yeah.
And there's actually no border between my property and there other than some spruce trees that run in the way.
Now, I think I saw an email from one of you, right?
Yes.
Talking about trying to leave a buffer, the existing buffer. Were you anticipating putting an additional buffer of plantings or just?
No, just basically what's there. I mean, there is some brush that sort of juts down. If you're looking at the, what is currently the sand slash playground area, there's a small amount of brush that sort of sticks out. We basically want to clear that and sort of just square that off a little bit, but not go into the tree line at all.
We, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Are you proposing any sort of lighting for this parking area?
No.
Is it gonna be at night, are you gonna have games in the evening, or is it just gonna be during the day?
No, there won't be any lighting at the field, so there won't be any games at night.
What's the parking situation like right now?
It's just street parking, so if you go.
Like I said, I've been there for forty years. Absolutely no problem. About five or six times a year there's a problem. Other than that, there's, really there's a problem. And access to getting to your parking lot is gonna have to be, there's all kinds of wat-, you really got to see the amount of water.
Have you guys seen the water that he's referring to? Have you observed that, like, when you were?
Not on, on the, on the field side, I've seen in the past, there's been water that puddles right in that, it's a grass, well, for like, it's not really much of a swell, it's, but it gets pretty muddy over there, which is why they have the wooden footbridge. I haven't really seen much on the other side as far as the last couple of times I've been down there for the last few years, but again, it's not, I'm not there right there in the spring maybe, but.
Kevin Lynch has offered to, a couple of great ideas to the Rec Commission as far as preventing that mud from being there. So we are working on a, we have a plan to create a better swale without rock to, you know, get something, some vegetation in there that's going to absorb the, you know, all the water that sits there.
I'm shocked that Kevin's not here to tell us about that.
Kevin's is me.
Yeah, he's on vacation.
So you're proposing to move the playground area, you're gonna make batting cages?
Well, yeah, eventually batting cages, that would probably be down the road. We do want to move the playground area across the street. I feel it's a safety concern. If you've ever been over there and you're playing a baseball game and they have the parents watching the game, kids going across the street back and forth, it's better to have everybody on the same side of the street.
Are you gonna have swings or things like that?
Just right now, it's gonna be moving the existing, the existing equipment and then possibly hoping to add an appropriate swing set, I guess. Right, that is.
They've taken out because of safety concern.
Yes. Well, no, it's, they're, they're, they have newer swing sets, they're not, they don't quite, they're not, I think those are like eighteen feet high or something. Those were. Yeah, so, we'd get new, new equipment that is, is safer and passes safety, safety ratings that those didn't.
Now, in terms of, I know you said that you'd have to have a pretty good batter to, to sort of shoot balls out that way, but with the playground area where it is, that's a pretty low-risk area, I think, given the.
Yes, it's the smaller field, so it's gonna be the younger kids playing it. And it's, I mean, that would be about a two-hundred and, some odd foot shot to.
And the batting cages are really, I mean, it sounds, I mean, you, you have to know, I mean, it's just a metal frame with netting, so it's not like.
I wasn't concerned about that side, I was just thinking the kids.
Now, is this parking area gonna be open, is it gonna be limited to opening, for example, April to October or whatever timeframe?
Meaning like, will it be gated, is that what you're asking?
Well, yeah, I don't know, are they gonna be allowed, is anybody gonna be allowed to not park there during a specific time period versus, you know, well, baseball season, April to October, so, I mean.
I would say no, because if someone's gonna use the swing set or whatever the playground area.
So the area is not gonna be in use, I guess, it's not gonna be operating, it will be only operating a certain, certain timeframe?
Yeah, pretty much same.
Right.
And the snack shack, that obviously is seasonal, but there's not gonna be any, I don't know. How is that gonna operate? Is it, is it gonna be any equipment there or?
Similar to what we have at, at the Corning Field and at GMS. Nothing, not, it's not gonna have like fryolators and grills and things. Yeah, no, it's gonna have small, they'll be able to do hot dogs and.
Hot dogs, coffee.
Yeah.
Popcorn.
Yeah, popcorn.
Those are really like the only three things that we're using electricity for typically.
And refrigeration.
Why wouldn't you need a sixty-carat parking lot for two baseball fields that could be used a certain period of time for kids? There hasn't been sixty cars there, again, in the forty years I've been there. You know, there's a few cars that park in front of her house, they park along the edge, but there's not sixty.
Well, we'd rather, again, this is coming from all the experience at Brickyard. We'd rather have more parking than we'd need. Also, if, where it's not a paved parking lot, you can make it for sixty cars and you get three or four people that don't know how to park properly and now you're lucky if you fit thirty in there, thirty or forty, so.
When you ask that question, I mean, what are you, so are you thinking?
Well, there's actually no buffer between, I guess, myself and there. So I'm going to have a parking lot on the side of my property. If I, if you look at the, is it larger picture or zero picture? That set of trees that's between where it says sixty cars, that's actually my property. And they're just whole spruce trees that are dying. So very shortly, there's gonna be nothing between me and the parking lot.
You don't want to water them?
Excuse me?
I said you don't want to water them. I'm just, I'm just kidding. Or the trees.
I mean, the trees get watered, but they're.
No, no, I'm, I'm just kidding, yeah, yeah, I'm just kidding.
In fact, you can see they're getting thinner in the front.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was just teasing you. What was there forty years ago?
Forty years ago?
Yeah.
Same thing.
Yeah.
And, and I'll make a statement, when you buy this property, they better put tennis courts in there for you, the town is. I still wait for the tennis courts.
Who told you that?
Huh? Of course they rent this.
You should go find them and sue them, man.
I have breakfast with them every morning. I don't really do it. But no, I mean, obviously it's been undeveloped, it's been a playground, it's gonna hang around the area. Again, it's soft, you know, they dug a hole, it used to be Reed's Pond, seven foot down you're gonna hit, you're gonna have, you're gonna try to cut in, I don't know why, two accesses, but you have two accesses going into it. I'm gonna have a parking lot next to it.
Well, the two entrances for fire and safety.
In a, in a parking lot.
Yep. Well, if a car. If you get a car immediately inside one opening on fire, you have to get into the other one to get behind it. That's, that's, any, that's universal.
So if this isn't gonna be gated, how will it be posted? In other words, to, to assure that there aren't high school kids hanging out there on a Saturday night that's what they're having?
You'll call the police and they'll come, they'll come around and tell them to leave.
So no signs, no posting, no?
That's worked well over the last four years.
I mean, honestly, the police are actually looking forward to this happening because they can now drive in and see what's going on back there. I mean, it's, it's a positive. I mean, I don't understand, like, from the road, they can't see what's going on at the top of the hill and they're not gonna get out of their cruiser and walk up there. Maybe they might, but typically, I mean, if they can't see it, it's not happening, but if they pull into the parking lot, they can get to the back of the, the parking area and they'll be able to see what's going on, if there is anything going on. So from their perspective, it's a, it's a win situation because they, they like.
But they're not gonna be looking in where the two, where the two lots are, where the two ball fields are, where there's actually a building they can hide behind.
Yeah, but that's like closer to the road.
Everything's close to the road though.
Yeah.
Then we moved them closer to the road.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, the, the old plan is.
So aside from budgetary concerns, is there room for additional plantings? I mean, I know that there's obviously budgetary constraints, but.
I mean, there is a, there's gonna be a decent buffer. You know, we, we talked, I know event, every once in a while, we'll get a call from a conservation commission, they'll say, you know, they'll have some trees or something that'll come in, you know, can you use them in a park? So that could be something that we could do down the road and just sort of build that up as, you know, when those come in. Because, you know, they're always looking for spots to put things.
Have you met with the conservation commission?
No.
Are you looking to meet with the conservation commission?
Not at this, no, I wasn't planning on it.
Is anyone else here in a butter of this? Do you have anything? Just listening?
So I can hear, I've got the plan.
Sure. If there was, if there was additional plantings in that area, would you feel better about that?
One of the things I was gonna, because of the field, if you go to the field opposite the word Jeff Lane, are you gonna, are they gonna leave a buffer there? Right now, that's all trees. On the side of, the left side of the pictures you're looking, they're gonna leave, they said they were gonna leave twenty feet of trees.
Twenty feet back from the road, is it?
No, between the, the property, the property to the right.
Between the property and there.
But there's nothing between my house and.
There's nothing between her house, and if you do this, there'll be, nothing between my house and the field.
You're across the street, correct?
She's the one who's across. Sorry, sir.
You're across the street from the fields, correct? You're on the side of the parking lot.
I'm across the street, right, side of the parking lot, across the street.
Could we have your name for the record, please?
Sure, Ashambo Dennis, fourteen year.
It's, if you're look, if you're standing on the road, looking at my house, I'm on the left side of the field.
Okay. Could you, could you, we have your name too, please, for the record? With the address?
Nineteen Jeff Lane.
Thank you.
Are there currently trees between your property and the fields?
Some.
Some, so not.
Not the whole.
You're not obstructed. Your, your property is not obstructed, like, you can see the fields from your property, okay.
Do you have a, you have a stockade fence and a bunch of birchers on your side, don't you? Okay.
That we put out ourselves.
Yeah, yeah, no, but that's, okay, no, just, just trying to figure out where you're, which one you're at.
Directly from mine.
You can see it on the plan, I think, if.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so those trees on that side, there is a small group that's not coming down at all. If you look at, the, the dash lines are basically the, the lot lines. So the only trees that would really be coming out would be the current wooded area that, I wish I had.
Three-quarters of an acre.
Yeah.
We have a full acre to the right, we're gonna only use three-quarters of it.
So if you look here, oops, sorry. These trees right here will be coming out, again, will be leaving about twenty-foot buffer right there of trees. This is pretty thin here, because I guess they cleared it out five dozen years ago. And this is new growth in there, but. There's nothing.
So looking at.
So if you look at this, this is your house right here, correct?
Yes.
This is your house, right?
Yes.
Okay, and what do you?
That's.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what you're saying is these trees right here are, are coming out or not?
No.
No, those are staying, we're not touching those.
So I don't see anywhere a change to, to what you're, right? Because those trees are gonna stay?
Yeah.
Right, so we're all on the same page with that, though, right? Okay, just wanna check, so we got you figured out, I think. At least a little bit. Yeah.
So where's.
I have a question.
Trees right here, those trees are gonna remain, some of these trees will come out.
Yeah.
He lives right here.
Yeah.
On the small of the, do you really have a buffer here of trees between Jeff Lane and the field?
Yes, them.
Just so you can see what I'm talking about.
That's actually all the trees they want to knock down. If you look down at it, you can see the swale going to the thing. And then this is the same place opposite direction where you can see, like, not as as of yesterday.
So I'm gonna ask you this. How far off the road is that tree line?
Right now, um.
Three, four feet.
Three trees. So about sixty. And that's only because I keep the thing, honestly, literally the day before they came, I went out there, weed whacked everything to keep the mosquitoes down. Because otherwise, it just fills up with water. So I've been cleaning it for the last, other than one time, it's the time that correction team did it and cut down some, I basically do it three or four times a year.
I've got a measure that's fifteen feet off the road. The trees, the tree line starts from the road. At fifteen feet.
The only question that I have is, I mean, even if you leave, you leave twenty feet of trees, you could be fifty feet off the road.
Who's saying it fifty feet?
Well, if you're fifteen feet off the road to the tree line.
You get that buffer and then you're gonna leave twenty feet, so.
Then the other problem is that nine times out of ten, and I'm just speaking from experience of it being at this table a lot, we can ask for fifty feet of trees to be left, and when you cut it down to fifty, everybody thinks it's ten. Because all the trees are so high, you're looking right through it and it doesn't make a difference. Do you think that that would be a case that would happen here?
I don't, because we've already knocked this down once before. A gentleman named Dennis Parker had already knocked it down to make, where they're putting the ball field, he wanted to make a, a parking lot. And they knocked it down one summer and then never did anything after that, they, they started going back. And you can actually see the trees, if you look at the ones going downward, the trees, you can actually see the size of the trees, they're not that big.
What's a, what, if you had to prioritize these issues that you brought up, what would you say is more important to you? Seeing cars or seeing a baseball field?
Cars.
Okay. To me, that seems like something that may be easier addressed.
Baseball field, it's not a tree hugger, but, you know, you just keep cutting them.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying I'm a tree hugger, but, you know, you just keep, you're flattening it down.
I mean, I think that there's, I think that, from, from what they're showing us, there seems to be some practical consideration for the need to maybe remove trees on that side of the road. I think that your concern about cars, you know, I think that's a valid concern. And I think that that's potentially something that could be alleviated, you know, potentially, if you look, if you go back and look at that and say, okay, what can we do in terms of plantings or something like that?
And you really have to pay attention to the water.
Well, yeah, I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna be looking at that anyways, though, because they, you already talked about the baseball field side, that you're gonna be building those up.
It's on both sides.
Right, but I'm just saying, you know, I assume that that's something they're gonna have to look at.
Kevin's working with us on that.
Right.
He won't let us goof that one up.
Yeah, I, I don't think he will.
No.
And like that, what does that mean?
He.
You go for another?
I'm sorry?
Do you goof up another?
No, 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 I'm just saying, we have.
You have a, they have a third set of eyes that's, that's keeping an eye on, making sure that that's gonna be dry enough to utilize.
Knows what's there and has been there for the last sixty years, so. Yeah, he beat you a little bit. Plus he has, knows all the people who here wanders, so.
How many people do you expect to attend these games or these events?
Typically, a baseball team will have ten to twelve players. So if there, if there are two games going on, you're talking anywhere from forty to forty-eight players. So probably family members of forty to forty-eight players if there's a maximum.
Is that what you've gotten in the past, well, right now in terms of, I know that the ball fields are there, but, I mean, typical game, is that what you usually get?
Go by the Corning Field, what do they call it, Brook Road?
Right, yes.
I mean, up there, when the kids play and there's games going one after another, that parking lot can overflow. And I would say that parking lot can probably hold over forty cows.
I was just at one at Dara too, and it was pretty, it was pretty.
Well, Dara, and Dara has three fields plus the other facilities, so that, that can overflow quickly.
Yeah, I think there's only two going on when I was there though, but it was still, you know, filling up pretty good. I mean, I think from my perspective, I think ultimately, you know, I, I understand your concerns. I think what they're looking to do is something that does benefit, you know, a large number of people, which is obviously one of the considerations in looking at this. I think if you have the ability to go back and look at potentially, I mean, looking at this map and looking at the trees, it really does seem like his property line is the only one that would be a major concern in terms of change to those, to those butters. You know, I understand that you're on that side, but your trees are not changing. So you're looking at what you're looking at, you may be looking at something a little bit nicer after they're done with it, which would be kind of nice for you, or better for you, I should say. You know, I think his side is the only side that, if you guys could take a look and see if there's any way of, even if it's just some sort of, you know, plantings or something like that, to try to beef up the, the buffer, that might help him out. I mean, you, like you've said, you've already dealt with cars, so it's not necessarily an objection to cars on your road, because you see cars on your road, it's just an objection to looking at a parking lot. So I would have ventured a guess that if you're not looking at a parking lot or it's obstructed, you might be happier.
Much happier.
Okay, I think that's a reasonable thing to, to bring.
Jan, you had something?
I was gonna ask quickly, do you guys have wells or puddle chuck water? Wells?
I have, I have one more of the contests. I'm over a hundred and twenty.
Oh, okay.
You watch it?
Um, great, so, um.
Well, then they'll soon all be on town water.
Well, that could, that is quite possible. What I was gonna simply mention is that the site is in the Aquifer District, which means that any of your storm water does have that potential to infiltrate and get into the groundwater that is drinking water for the neighbors. So just in thinking about what, with making improvements to the site, what the maintenance plans are on the site for storm water and lawn fertilizing and lawn maintenance and what any potential impacts might be to drinking water.
Actually, you, you won't really see much, if, anything except maybe an improvement, because right now, we still, the, the, they, there is grass there, it is being fertilized, it is going through the, the whole system. But it gets pretty hard because it's, it's not irrigated currently. When you, when you have a decent grass with, with decent soil, it'll actually take a lot more of that water and you'll get a lot less runoff than we do right now.
Will these be irrigated?
Yes.
So will there be an in- increase in fertilizer, uh, fertilizer applications?
No.
No.
It currently is fertilized?
Yes.
How often?
There's something, can I keep in mind and aim for something over nitrogen?
I don't know off, offhand, I know it's the same, um, schedule that we do all the fields in town.
Should be, what, six times, five times, six times?
It's four to six times depending on the application. But it's...
You know, we can get zero phosphate fertilizer, correct?
Yes, it's all, yeah.
Or you can get the water that you're gonna use to water them.
Your well.
I'm gonna actually put a filter online, but we won't get to that.
I'm kidding.
Well, that's, we're talking about a filtered well, or, or there's the possibility, uh, we're working out something, um, to make it feasible to do it with the, with town water.
Public water, yeah.
And just bear in mind, the thicker your grass gets, while the grass may absorb, the root system may absorb more, uh, water from the soil, you're actually gonna get less water penetrating into the soil when you have a thicker, lusher grass. Um, and what happens is the density of the grass essentially, um, a friend of mine equated it to concrete, um, i- i- essentially sheet flows off of the surface of the grass. And so you wanna make sure you look at how your topography is, so that if you do have a storm event, you're gonna see your water sheet flowing over your fields or not necessarily infiltrating at the same rate if you have a thicker, lusher grass. Um, so you're gonna wanna make sure you're accounting for where that water is going, um, and having somewhere for it to, to collect, and then have that opportunity to infiltrate.
Okay, just, I'm not trying to be nasty about this, but just on the filtered water, if you happen to dig a well that has radon or arsenic in it, your contamination of your, your filtration to carbon is actually considered radioactive waste.
Well, they're, luckily they're...
It's gonna be elevating. If you get, yeah, if you, if you have any amount of radon in your water and you put it through carbon filters, the carbon takes out the radioactivity, you end up with a concentration of radioactivity in a small area, you end up with radioactive carbon.
I suspect that's something they'll have to look at when they get to that point, I mean, obviously you can't speak to that.
Yeah.
No, I duly noted.
Good for everyone to keep in mind.
All right, so it seems like the takeaway is here are just potential of a little bit of a buffer between the parking lot and his yard and water maintenance, you know, runoff.
Is there gonna be a buffer in behind it, Jen, going towards land? And towards...
Do you have a button on the back before I answer the question?
It looks like there's a substantial tree cover to the back already.
Yes.
Is any of that being removed?
No, there's some brush that moved, like I said, it juts out, that's gonna be cleared down a little bit, um, more for visibility for the police and also to square off the parking area.
Sure.
There won't be a lot of cutting going on over there.
No.
Yeah. Oh, and then the other, I think the other takeaway, question?
The other question is, are you gonna change the height or are you deciding not to do that? The height of the field?
The, the field of the...
I'm sorry, the parking lot?
It will, it will come down a couple feet, yes.
Then I'm really upset, because now I'm gonna have a swivel going down, now we definitely have a problem. What happens now, it was Reed's pond, it was filled in on both sides. It's gonna be filled from here if you're gonna start doing this, so now, not only am I not gonna have a border, I'm gonna have this.
Isn't the elevation three feet above the road?
No, it's about seven feet.
Seven, eight?
Seven feet is the elevation?
Yeah.
And we're worried about two feet?
Yeah, you're gonna end up with a, kinda do it next year, it's, it's gonna look like a swimming pool, it's gonna park a lot in the middle of it. So you're gonna cut down two feet.
Yeah, but if they're addressing drainage though, then that's, I mean, if they, if they look at drainage for the field, I assume you're gonna have to look at, and we, we've already asked them to go back and look at the surface for the parking lot.
So you're gonna put it down to a school?
Well, the, you said the road is, the road is how many feet from, how, how many feet below, s- seven or eight feet, is that what you...
Seven, seven feet.
Seven feet to the peak, what, to the peak of the pond.
Okay, so I mean, I would imagine that something could be graded towards the road, so you don't have a swimming pool.
Exactly.
Right, they're not gonna dig three feet below the road and then, I don't know where, I, I, I'm not quite sure I'm following where you are.
What are you doing to the...
On the sides?
That crosses the street from her and from my, from my tree line. So if you're looking at my tree line...
If it, if it grades down from your tree line though, it's...
It doesn't grade down now?
No, if it's going to grade down from your tree line though, it's gonna grade to the road.
And away from you.
And away from you.
Which actually creates essentially a wall so that their storm water doesn't trespass onto your property.
Well, the storm water, there's nothing, that sinks right in, it's only in the front on the street and it makes a swamp. There, there's never anything on the field or up the hill.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? The board, Steve?
Are there any other what, when issues that have to be addressed for this project?
I don't know.
And I'm not just talking about where the parking lot is, but on the other side, um, perhaps funding the ball field, has that been addressed at all? It's a question.
Yeah, Joe had no, Joe had no problem with it.
The channel, did, did you, I know you guys probably discussed, did you discuss this last time at all? And you don't see any problems?
Yeah, so I guess our only feedback is just surface of the parking lot, water, you know, coming off the fields, and a little bit of a buffer, if, you know, and I think...
Keep as much there as you can, like on that side, if you have to plant a little more, see if you can, you know, you don't have to do it immediately, it's just something, you know, as you go along, like you say.
Right.
Get a chance for the trees, it's a good place to do them and build that up a little bit.
You know, I do think ultimately you are gonna be looking at something nicer, so if we can get, if we can address some of your concerns, you know, I think it may actually be something that you end up being happy about down the road, if we address them, you know, the important things.
Okay, guys, let's see, is in front of you the mine?
Fair enough, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
That's about, that's basically it. They're not here for approval from us.
Okay.
Off of me, uh, because this is just as a courtesy to them and to the townspeople, and try to be mediated, make everybody as happy as we can. It's, it's not a, uh, how would I say?
It's not a requirement.
It's not a requirement for my, it's not a regulation.
It's exempt from plan review because of the municipal...
So does the co-op, the building department now?
He's the one that's working with them. That's Kevin Lynch.
Kevin Lynch is the building captain.
He's not here this week, feel free to call him, he'll, uh, what's your concerns to him, and he'll keep, keep on them, trust me.
So there's no, there's no actual final plan that comes out of this?
No.
Like, we're gonna do A, B, C, D, E, F? So once, and I'm not being funny, once we go through the door, they can do whatever they want.
It's, it's, it's town property?
They already could. They already could.
Yep, but that, but the whole point is that they came here to make sure that they were addressing issues ahead of time.
To try and be good neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
And just to confirm for Joan, who's not here, this is the most recent?
Yes.
This is the version we're going for, okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I think it was, because they were saying they're putting the fields back, yeah, putting the fields back, they had the fly ball issue. Checking the test from standing at lacrosse games, get it right behind home plate on the softball field, when your back is to home plate and you're trying to watch the softball field, can, and watch the lacrosse game, can be very entertaining, and there's games going on at the same time.
Should we start calling you Russell?
It almost seemed more dangerous for us, the spectators, and the kids on the field.
Now you're official.
Oh, good. I was disappointed.
I get your names right now.
I didn't want anyone to be able to swear at me during that, so...
Someone's gonna be TPing Russ's house tonight.
Sorry, Russ.
Steve, wastewater feasibility study.
Well, first thing I'd like to do is I'd like to ask if we could see what the audience members are here for to make sure that we don't keep them longer than they may desire to stay.
Thank you for that. Um, I was interested in finding out more about PFOA stuff, and I thought that on the town site, they said that there was gonna be a meeting here about it, I know that at, at the school, they were doing blood testing and addressing malice issues, but...
That, that's the issue, that's the FO, PFOA meeting tonight, it's up to school.
At the school?
Yep.
The wrong place?
Well, what is, what is that though, what are we gonna...
Stuff about blood testing and stuff like that, stuff, how you'd be eligible, how you, how you, uh, sign up for it and all the information about that, they were also gonna give a status update of where they were standing with...
That's what I wanted to find out, because, um, we're actually on well wa, uh, not well, but we're on public water, but I'm a real estate agent in town, and I just wanted to get a little more information for clients and such, so, I guess I missed the vote on that one.
Oh, they're still going?
It's still going.
I'd be surprised if they were done in forty-five minutes.
Yeah, it's at seven to nine, so I thought that was here, so, my mistake.
Yeah, we did have something on the agenda tonight, just for a general update for the board of where things stand, but it's not, the other one will be much better.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, if you have any clients that, with kids that wanna play baseball, you're in great shape now, so...
But the other thing, if you go to the town's website, on the left, there is a link for, um, water information, so the, the town has been doing a really good job of, uh, posting everything. Um, also, if you go to the Department of Environmental Services website, um, I believe they've got a quick handy link right on their homepage to get to their updates, and they're posting daily status updates there as well.
I've gone through some of it, I just thought it would be like the latest updates and maybe just get some feedback from residents and such, that's all, so... All right, Campbell or GMS?
Campbell.
Awesome, thanks, guys, you're on the story. All right, appreciate it. Have a good evening.
You want to give us your presentation?
You have big...
Is there anybody else here?
Reveal.
I don't know exactly what you're expecting here, but I can give you two different versions. The first version is it gonna be, I'm supposed to tell you that the wastewater feasibility study has been passed along to this board, and it now needs to be incorporated in any future planning, developing, master plan, anything like that. I'm done.
All right, so what...
What does it say, it's eighty-one pages, can you go ahead?
It's an eighty-one page document that is delight to read.
Yes.
It really is.
You really, you really should read it word for word, and try to do it in less than three nights, because that's what it took me.
Especially, especially the last... Yeah.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
The appendices are particularly enlightening.
Oh, it, I fell asleep, I, I got thirty-one pages the first night, and then I fell asleep.
All right, highlights...
Needless to say, the highlight of the whole thing is, if we're gonna use any type of sewer system, we're gonna have to go to Manchester, or we're gonna have to go down to, well, yeah, Merrimack or Nashua. The ones at the highest capacity that can accept us right now is definitely Manchester. There is a section in there that stipulates if we came up with our own treatment facility and then sent it on along the way, so that it reduced the cost, but it raised, it costs us more money upfront because we would be doing a treatment. But then we would be sending it to the end result, which would be much cheaper. So in the long run, it'd be cheaper to have our own type of little station that semi-treats it and then send it along, basically it takes out the bulk of the solids. But in the short term, the easiest thing to do is just send it to Manchester or send it to Merrimack, problem with Merrimack's, gotta go under the river. Problem with Nashua, she's gotta go through Hudson, the Hudson system can't really handle it.
Yeah, and you have to go across it, oh, it's already, there's infrastructure to go across the river.
There is, but the problem is you'd probably have to increase the equipment, we'll say, from the river to where we would be sending it.
Do you know roughly what the break even point was on the system here versus just going straight to, I don't know if you picked that up in the...
The only place that it's really feasible would be somewhat affordable is to go up to Manchester.
Right.
And that's only for the north end?
And that's only for the north end.
Yeah.
The study also says how it's highly unlikely that the way the town is laid out, that you could ever see sewer running all the way down three A. Because it's just not feasible, the way the town's been laid out, it's been laid out too far apart with the southernmost and northernmost, so odds are if they both got developed, one would go one way, the other would go the other way. You may get some residential tie-in, but you'd have very little...
How far south would the, uh, would it come if it went to Manch, uh, to Manchester?
It's far, it's gonna be a long way.
No, basically Corning Road.
Yeah, um, I thought the study covered the commercial area.
Not too much, well, because of the capacity.
Yeah. The study covered through the commercial area, so it was looking like the northern area, it came to basically here, and then excluded all of the residential area in the middle, um, and then the study also looked at the southern portions and connecting east to Hudson.
So what's the... It's gonna be, it's gonna be a very, I mean, my guesstimate is on eighty-one pages, you might have five paragraphs that will address the residential.
Yep.
Because it's just not...
Right.
Gonna be feasible.
One, one of the points, I remember when the, um, consultant spoke to Selakman, um, a couple months ago now, one of the issues is the road profile.
And I wasn't there for that meeting.
The road profile, the road profile, um, if you, if you look at it kind of longitudinally, your roads are more undulating, which means it's not well suited to running a pipe through it. To have your roads laid out to be conducive to gravity, helping move your material through the pipe, um, you need to have, um, kind of that gradual down gradient to your roadway connecting into your collectors, so it didn't... Road layouts weren't necessarily conducive, and so no matter what you do, you have to have some sort of pumping system, um, in combination, and that also increases the cost associated with the system.
And if you were gonna go through Merrimack, if you were gonna send it that way, you would then entertain the opportunity of some residential, because it would be essentially...
Right through the center.
At the end of Talon, is where it needs to go through underneath the, uh, the river to get to Merrimack.
There's only one location in town that's feasible for it right now, and that's Pine Creek, 'cause we can pump gray water. I always say that because if our leach fields go, we'd probably be coming to see if we could make that deal.
How far does sewer run down right now? How far does sewer line run down right now?
For me, by crow flies, it's a quarter mile to the pumping station. And we have pu, we have six pumps.
Kinda give you the big picture, what the breakdowns were, um, they had short little tables that focused on what the design and permitting, construction, um, uh, surface restoration, uh, and contingency funding would be for, for a system. Um, they did not include the cost of acquiring easements, um, or town administrative costs for oversight, um, and sewer billing, et cetera. And for the northern section, the northern section, oh, that had the Merrimack or the Manchester option, the southern section only had the, um, Hudson option. The comparison between the Manchester and the Merrimack, um, Merrimack was almost double the cost of connecting it to Manchester. And I would think, believe the, the, one of the primary drivers was that river crossing on the price there. And the gravity system, that's another piece where it was double. The southern system was about comparable to the northern on an annual cost. Northern going to Manchester.
So also recall that it needs some recommendations about different ways to potentially address, uh, future growth in the areas.
Right.
Potentially, uh, keeping in, in line with what, uh, we're suggesting for future planning, things like looking at different opportunities to fund, different opportunities to, to work with potential commercial build out.
I mean, I don't wanna be the guy that's negative, but I'm gonna tell you, it's highly unlikely that you'll see this happen, unless there was a company that came in that wanted to go, really have it, and was willing to spend the money. I mean, it could go on the ballot, the town, maybe the town would do it. I mean, it could go on the ballot, the town, maybe the town would do it, it's just that knowing the way this town tends to operate, I don't see this town wanting to bring in sewer, to want to thrive business, to want to bring it in. So, I don't know, I mean, we got a grant to do the study, we had a private donation, do a little bit more of it. So, we have the study, we know what it takes. Now, at least we have something if someone ever came to us and said that they wanted to do it and they wanted to know what it would take. So, that's pretty much what, what was done for it, so that we have at least a parameter to go by.
That's why we did what we did.
It's slim.
Mm-hmm.
But, the likeliness of this happening, I would probably say is slim.
Yeah.
Well, the big issue is gonna be, I mean, the, if you pump in from outside, I mean, then, or get water, then you have to take into account the sewer issue as well because that's gonna raise the price, I would think, I mean, that's the only concern, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, some of, some of the opportunities um to try and offset costs would require you say at a policy level, these are things that we wanna, that we wanna go after and implement, but it would take some, some work to get there. So, one of the things they've kind of first say is, don't think you're gonna get state aid grant funds, 'cause state aid grant funds haven't been funded since two thousand eight. Um, they've started refunding the uh state revolving loan fund, but that, it, they've got such a backlog of, of applicants and eligible folks that it's, you know, there, there's a long wait. Um, but there are USDA rural development um funds out there, they have, they're um, they have rural utilities, loans and grant funds. Um, you would likely, I, I would need to double check that you're eligible, is one, because you do have some urbanized areas. Um, they have then different thresholds that you may be within an urbanized area, but as long as, as a municipality, you have fewer than, I don't know, X number of P residents, then you may still be eligible. So, that's, that's a possibility, you're also in an area um that is a kind of a target area for them, so that would help make the community more competitive for those funds. Um, community development block grant might be a possibility, um, but they're gonna be looking to see that there's a low-income population beneficiary, um, for, depending on which of their fund, their funding streams. Um, EDA, Economic Development Administration, that's federal. You would need to get the sewer um project into um a comprehensive economic development strategy. Right now, I believe Litchfield is included in um the REDC region, um, which they're massive, they cover like the eastern portion of Hillsborough County and um Rockingham County. And they have their large regional um comprehensive economic development strategy, um, that if you have a project in that, then you become eligible for um those economic development funds. So, there's, you know, you could then start pooling funds, but it would take a bit of coordination to line it all up and, and get the, get the timing to get all the funding pieces together.
I'm wondering how much that would be as well, I mean, these are some pretty sizable numbers.
In the, yeah. Yeah, exactly, so.
Was Litchfield the only one included in that feasibility study or was Merrimack, do we know what Merrimack's doing or?
We paid for it.
We paid for it, okay. In terms of, I mean, I don't know what Merrimack's doing in terms of this issue, I don't know, they're on the other side.
They have their own system.
Yeah, they've got their own wastewater system.
So, they're pretty much, yes.
Yeah.
Merrimack does, Nashua does, Manchester does.
Is that all, is that all penetration?
This is wastewater.
This is waste, oh wastewater, excuse me.
Yeah.
Hold it, stop penetration.
Different color.
No one cares about PFOA and their sewer.
Nope.
Are we done with the, with that wastewater stuff? I have a question, but I don't wanna divert it from, it's not about that, something separate, so I don't wanna jump in unless we're done with that.
Well, go ahead. No, anything else we have on that? I think basically it's just something to keep in mind as we go along.
Yeah, I mean, it, basically for the master plan, it needs to be set in at, I don't know, good luck.
You know, it's, I think it's something to be acknowledged, that the study is there, and right now, um, given the cost, it may not be feasible at this time. Um, without significant funding from an unidentified source.
If you wanna spend some of your money and put it in first, you'd agree.
Information about those grants, look what I can, I mean, yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll take a look at it with you.
I would really.
Okay.
I mean, I know it's small dollars, but.
Yeah. When you start adding up small dollars with small dollars, they can add up.
Yeah.
It's the possi- you know, it's, it's part of how it works.
But I mean, no one's gonna give a hand of seven million dollars to do this. Bless your nose, buddy.
Or I hit the lottery. Gotta, gotta play to win.
How bad do you want that?
I have no problem keeping my septic system up if I won the lottery. Um, my question was, do you remember a while back, we were talking about a group of, I think it was parents that were trying to apply for a grant for sidewalks?
Yep.
Whatever happened with that? Just drop dead? No, nothing?
You should watch this later.
Yes.
We had that conversation.
Oh, you did?
Yep.
Um, the school should lead it, that's the way we left it, the school should lead it. Um, the residents didn't wanna take it any further than they, they brought up the question, they brought up the question and wanted us to handle it. We already had a vote back in two thousand and thirteen, asking the public for thirteen thousand dollars on a warrant article to do the engineering. And it got voted down by over sixty percent. Actually, almost eighty percent. So, it was overwhelmingly turned down for thirteen thousand just to engineer it. So, we feel as though if the school wants to lead it, then we'll put in the work to go with it, but that's the way we left it.
Was there someone from the school there and involved in that conversation? Do they know that that onus has kind of been thrown to them?
Troy was supposed to reach out to him again.
Okay.
And so far, the response has not been very favorable.
Okay, which school was it?
It actually be for, it'd be the school board.
Okay. But the sidewalks would be in the neighborhood of schools, one school?
Well, the theory was that if you had, if you put in a sidewalk that went from Albuquerque to LMS, you would then have all the schools connected by sidewalks.
Okay.
So, that's the theory. So, ultimately, it would be a sidewalk on Pine Crest Road
Okay.
to LMS.
Alright.
Plus, isn't the money that's available for that very low?
I'm not sure, I'd have to ask my office, um, what the funding levels are, 'cause he does all the safe routes to school work. Um, it's not huge, but it gets you going, um, so that's.
The selectmen felt that when it was turned down for thirteen thousand dollars to engineer it, it's not likely somebody's gonna spend. And I know what happened to it last time when it was brought up is at the uh deliberative session. People started spitting out numbers, this could cost two hundred thousand dollars, this could cost three hundred thousand dollars. Nobody knows what it would really cost.
Right.
But when those numbers come out, the people that are in attendance are the majority of the people that are gonna go vote.
Right.
And they said, whoa.
I mean, if there's still some lingering interest, I can have Matt reach out to Troy and um someone from the school department just to say, I'm here if you want more information and want any assistance.
Yeah, I, Troy's out until Thursday, and so I don't know if he did it last week.
And leave it at that. Okay. Okay.
But he was, he was charged with trying to get in contact with the school and see if they want to uh start this project.
Stop it, okay.
So, if you reach out to Troy, Troy would be able to um
Okay.
direct you. Or give you an answer of what they said.
Okay, that's fine.
What else do you got?
Saint Corbin.
Want me to do that one too?
Yep.
True.
What do you wanna know?
Let's, let's see, I'll take Troy.
Are you getting water?
Getting water.
We still don't know. We sent the letter off to Saint Corbin stating, they, they wanted a letter stating, uh, saying what our demands were, they wanted a dollar figure, we wouldn't give them a dollar figure, but we did give them what our demands were to this date. That letter has been posted on the town website. And it basically said that the water mains, the compaction, the road paving, the hydrants, connection, service fees, all that good stuff. And a to be, to be determined restitution. Other than that, I don't have a lot of information on it because we don't get anything different than the public gets.
Right.
We've been left in the dark and we are trying to force ourselves in and it's reluctantly happening. Would mind me to go.
Michael, I had, I mentioned to Joan, just putting it on the agenda, just so that it could just be a basic status update, we hadn't really given it any, given it much attention, other than acknowledge that it exists. But, um, where there is a potential for water infrastructure to be expanded, I think it's good for the board to just know what the progress is on that. Also, just to know what um the degree of contamination is um across the, the town, so that when you do have applicants that come in, you know whether they're impacted or not, or where to find out if they're impacted or not, um, and what it means to them, uh, so.
Uh, the only other thing that I can add is that two selectman meetings ago, we were asked about stubbing all the properties or whether people, some people don't want it, they don't want public water. They apparently think that they're gonna filter the water out, or whatever they're gonna do. But we made a motion that we are still going to put a stub off of the main pipe in the right way in front of every property that the pipe's gonna run in front of, so.
That's wise.
So, you know, people don't wanna hook up today, or if it was gonna go through, it would still be there to connect later on.
Right.
But, it should probably be on the agenda all the time and anytime I have information, I'll pass it on.
Yep. Yeah, I guess, I talked to Troy today, he said that he had nothing new on it as of.
Troy was here today?
No, email, by email.
Oh, okay. Troy's supposed, supposed to be taken a few days off.
Yeah, well, I had, I had just asked him, it was, the latest update I had was like a week ago. So, he just, he did email back, he said, no, there's nothing, so.
Yeah, I mean, DES has been putting weekly updates, so as they get more sampling data, they're updated, they've got a, a map that it's technically poster sized and I was trying to print straight from the web and apparently my printer doesn't like the printer interface and I couldn't get it to print on, all on one sheet of paper and in color, so, we get what we get. Um, if I downloaded the file, it would've been easier. That aside, it at least gives you an idea of where the, the impacted areas are, um, in the degree. Um, what doesn't show here is the symbology is done, not only, like a larger dot represents um a higher level of contamination, but it's also kind of color coded, so that you've got red, you know, caution. Um, is your worst, uh, orange is your any one seventy to four hundred. Um, and then you've got a couple gradients below that as well, that are below the safe, safe threshold.
They did start to expand that as well, the mile and a half.
Yes, they have.
They're expanding it now further down three A because they're noticing the concentration of three A being where the contamination area is.
Yes, where the wind blows.
They're continuing to expand it, there is no set number anymore. But, the general mile and a half radius covered, it seemed like it covered the congestion area.
Yeah.
But going down along three A, they're, they're continuing to expand it until they hit numbers they see feasible for a long enough distance.
So, like at this point, we've got all the way um down, let's see, Albuquerque, I think we're fairly low in that area, but there are some, if I could read the actual street names, in the neighborhood of Jeff Lane, that's kind of that southernmost point where that whole neighborhood there has some wells that are over.
Thank you for the update, thank you for your work as usual, Jen. Minutes for June twenty-first.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for June twenty-first.
I have a sec, motion, I have a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
Passes flag zero one. Jen, do you have anything else for tonight?
No, sir.
Do you know if we have anything yet for the uh second, I have a second?
Don't.
Jen.
We don't have any applications in yet, we could get some master plan stuff back off the back burner, um.
Let's jump.
Joan, Mike, I'm not sure. Yeah, we could get master plan back on the agenda, we could make some progress on that between now and the next meeting. Couple just heads up from my own end of things, I'm currently helping cover a lot of what Camille was doing in her office. So, I'm kinda like three people in one, it feels like, well, temporarily, um, we held our last interview today, um, so we'll have another person.
Is someone else left?
Yes.
Was it the girl that was here last?
No, 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 Cassie's still here, she's good, I just didn't drag her out tonight, 'cause it was a quiet agenda, other than the recreation fields. No, uh, Camille, who is our principal planner, land use planner, um, been with NRPC for fourteen years, um, kind of the other really good go-to person in the office to be able to do this. Um, so, right now, I'm the only person in the office that can cover planning board meetings, um, so, um, Jill can, but she doesn't do um the application review side of things, so for Wilton, she and I are splitting the duties. Um, she's covering the meetings at least, which helps, um, and I'm covering Mason as well.
If you have a few more days like last Wednesday, you'd be all set.
Like last Wednesday. A long day.
With all the meetings?
I know.
You have less time trapped in an office, huh?
Yeah, but on the other hand, I've been, uh, up until now, managing our transportation programs as well, um, and the contract ad administration with DOT, so that still hasn't been fully transferred to the new, so we're kind of still in that overlap of passing that responsibility on to somebody else, so I can take over the land use programs, um, side of things, so it's kind of fun little transition, so. So, I welcome to light agenda tonight, it required a little less prep on my end than normal.
Anybody have anything else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'm gonna ask a question before you do that.
You may.
Do you know when your next meeting's gonna be?
Next meeting will be August second, at seven o'clock.
Is that okay?
Okay.
Were you thinking?
I thought we weren't, I thought we had nothing, that's why I was asking.
We may cancel the second meeting in August, if we have nothing.
Sorry, I won't be here for that anyway.
Which, the second meeting or the, the August second?
Yeah. Second meeting.
Neither will I.
Well, there you go.
That's why, that's why I set it up that way.
What is on, what is the second meeting of August?
Second meeting is usually a workshop.
Yeah, it's usually a workshop, and yeah, but, uh, it's, I'll be on vacation, so.
Me too.
And due to the budget, we did cut back some of the meetings.
So, we only do one a month in the summer.
A couple, in the summer, so, and things ask for it right now, so. Hopefully, things will break soon.
Well, we do have a meeting next week, um. Well, we do have a meeting next week, um, again with, um, Mr. Charbonneau's, um, representative Jim Pet- Jim Petropolis, um, who's kind of coming back, going to be coming back with part two. So, we've got a staff meeting with him next week to go over.
When's that?
The staff meeting?
No, 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 when, is he projected to bring in?
We'll find out next week.
Yep.
He's just coming in for, before he even gets ready to submit, he likes to come in and just walk through everything first.
Which workshop?
Between yourself and him, the last time.
Yeah.
If we get anything like that, it won't be any problem.
And I expect nothing less.
I, I, I was depressed the last time.
He was very well prepared, he made our job very easy. I'll give him that. I tried looking for stuff.
You didn't catch that road thing?
I don't do the pitch of the road, that's Lou.
Kidding.
Sorry.
Okay, so, any more questions?
So, that motion still stands.
Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
I oppose, I don't ever wanna leave.
We'll leave the microphones on. Passes six zero zero.